So, there will be an item, well, I may have a term, item seven will be public count. So with that amendment, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Ooh.
Of course.
Any other additions or corrections? Saying none, all those in favor signify as hang on.
Aye.
Opposed, agenda is approved. So, the purpose of today's special meeting is to interview candidates for county commissioner's seat in District Five, which consists of Somerset, Wheaton, Pittsford, and Wright Townships. At this time, I would outline some of the, what we would like to, and the commissioners can chime in if they have any additions. We will interview the candidates in alphabetical order as listed on the agenda. I would ask that the candidates go to the break room with Derek, and in fairness to all the candidates, that way when you hear the question, you're hearing it for the very first time. The same eight questions will be asked of all candidates. So, there's not any hidden agenda, it's the same exact questions will be asked of all. And then either Julie or I will send a message to Derek, and he'll indicate that we're ready for the next one. Now after your interview, you're more than welcome to join the audience and sit through the rest of the interviews, that's, but we're trying to be fair to all the candidates. So, with that, if everyone except for our first applicant would go with Derek, and we'll start the process. And, I can never pronounce your name.
No, rather.
I would welcome you to the podium.
Thank you.
And I should have stated it, I'll state it each time. I'll give you a brief opportunity for an opening statement, and then we'll start with the questions.
Okay.
The floor is yours.
Good morning, honorable board members, and the members of the public, and members of the law enforcement, if any. I'm very humbled to be today at this stage in my life, that I'd like to represent the special district, District Five, and it's a privilege to serve them with all my might, and with the duties that I have understood, alluded to the fact that we have an adequate important duty to perform to our taxpayers, and with that keeping in mind, I would like to proceed with whatever questions you have for me.
Okay, we'll start with Bruce, and then we'll just basically go one, two, three, four, eight around the table, so you may or may not be reading your own question, we compiled these basically from each, so Bruce, if you would please.
Do you have a history of working with other people and being able to build relationships in a positive way, and so how?
The entire working capacity with the taxpayers has been a long journey for me, and working with the community has been always positive. As a local official, we've had advantages, disadvantages, but being a public servant, a face of the public, I believe, a lot of times we've encountered issues where the demands of the taxpayers were something, and how do we abide with it? I've stayed in Hudson City as a councilwoman, and when I started off, it was a working agreement that we worked for whatever the demands and the needs are, to work in the capacity of whatever budgets were provided, local law enforcement or the public safety was important. So, working in that capacity, I think it's been quite an enjoyment, understanding what needs have, the public has put in front of us, and putting the best forward foot in regards with whatever little budget we would have, we've worked with that. So, a working agreement with the public has been always of high importance for me. I love working with my community, people have been my positive encouraging point all the time, so I'm a, I'm a public person, I'd like to say that.
Okay, Ruth?
Do you have a history of dealing with finances in a successful way? Finances?
Yes, I have, and historically, just being in a tax, city tax environment like Hudson had in Lenawee County, it gave me some kind of a privilege to work with only so much amount of budget when it came down to road or public safety, so all that created quite a bit of importance. So for me, finances, I believe, the budgets when they're given to us, I guess we have something that I like to perform with my community is with the CIP, a capital improvement plan, where whatever the dealings with the city or the township they bring forward, and we work within the means, because obviously taxpayer funding is something that not all the townships and cities can avail, so having a good standpoint where finances are, and understanding, I have that ability to bring it across our community and work within our means.
Okay, Julie?
Why and please be specific as possible, do you want to serve as the District Five County Commissioner? What is your motivation, and what are you looking to accomplish if you are appointed, and what will be your focus?
I think focus would be like how Ruth asked a question in regards of the budget and finances, and if I'm sound with it, that is my main concern, because there's only so much in budgets that we do allude, stating to the facts. The number one importance that I see around is the crisis in relation with public safety, and coming right down from the state of Michigan, I believe the statistics call out, is $30 million were slashed this year in reference with the budget package, and it came straight from the higher hierarchy, like I say, the governor, and as it relates to the secondary patrol for the roads, and that is a struggle, so that is something I'd like to see. And in reference, going back to the statistics where the budget was cut in such a way, about 147 separate items, our state, Michigan, was vetoed again by the governor to leverage against how conservative the Republicans are, and leverage that is being used as a leverage point to work onto budget negotiations, so that affected us pretty badly. So yes, public safety, number one, road patrol has been an issue, that is another one. I am very concerned about our school districts, we're all little children because they're our future administrators, they're our future ambassadors, so in regards with all of that, the health crisis or the mental health administration, that we need to still keep up, and for that funding is needed, and that is again going to be my plus point, my added intervention into the school districts in regards with that, which includes the ongoing battle, and how do we come back with the opioids, so that is a constant issue with our county and many townships in regulations with it. And everything requires funding, but not only that, as a local official, we need to be a part of that. Whether there's funding or not, like Ruth just questioned, regardless of finances, how good are you? Well, if, as a good commissioner, would have good values for good use of small funding, as little as possible or maybe none, so it depends upon what crisis we're facing, if these are the crises we like to attack, is once the opioid issue, our road safety crisis, which is an ongoing issue, and the budgets that's just been slashed for our road patrols. And I believe, last but not least, to add to Julie, what your question is, working with the legislation, I believe that this is what I have come to an understanding, that these amendments for the official year for 2019 and 2020 will be corrected, and I would like to see if it is corrected, it would be retroactive. We just, my whole scenario and my whole focus point, that I'd like to put all my effort would be is onto our funding, and as a county, all comes down to general fund, because it comes from the taxpayer pockets, my pocket, yours, everyone here, and if we were to increase our general fund, I think our need to just keep asking from the state for things like grants would be more conservative, so that is where I'm going. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. What does due diligence mean in reference to serving as a Hillsdale County Commissioner? And give a specific example or situation or scenario that calls for due diligence, and how would you accomplish it, and why is it or isn't it important?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. This question is a remarkable question, it works in my daily life. Due diligence, I believe as a local official, all days of our lives with pen, paper, and meeting with our taxpayers is due diligence, and when acting upon it, I personally believe that due diligence is acted with a presence of mind, and to be impartial, so for me, that is due diligence, because today we live in an environment where we try to have our own personal needs, and we're human, so that is just automatic, something that just comes up, but for me, for my due diligence, my act is my community. I don't have any personal agenda, I love my country, I love my township, so for me, what are my demands for my person who's asking for, oh, what are their needs, township, villages, and due diligence comes about in act because of the fact that we have, you know, so much going on, and in the balance of all of this, when we have alluded facts upon us, that we try to neglect that, how as local government, as govern, county commissioners, we can act, because I believe a county commissioner is elected member of the body, and then we have been elected for a reason, so we serve our executive and our legislation, which is again brought on from our state, or furthermore, our country. So, as local officials, our due diligence as a county commissioner is to administer those what we put in front, especially local ordinances, and we abide by them, so I believe due diligence is in effect with our job, as it spells out, our definition, abiding as an executive, as a legislation body, to further bring about local ordinances in place, and then also levy how we spend our budgeted line items, so for me, that's my due diligence.
Okay, we have about five minutes left, so we have four more questions, go ahead.
What are your thoughts on the millage to help support the county sheriff department efforts to provide a safe community for us all?
I believe it's important, because I come from a district where we have very small cities, and we lack full, full-time officers, full-time law enforcement, and for example, Reading, Somerset that I belong to, Litchfield, and all of these areas have lacked from 2005, this is the statistics, that our funding, the funding for the sheriff and the local law enforcement has been cut, and with the question that Julie had put in, I had answered the fact that when this amendment for the official year 2019, '20 would be amended, that correction that I look forward to would be retroactive, and I'm fully in support for that millage.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ruth?
Please explain what you would consider to be a SWOT analysis of the county government of Hillsdale County, at least one example for each.
I believe SWOT analysis for our government would start right from, again, our millages that we put in, the government folks who are critically analyzing and who are on face front for years, I believe SWOT analysis need to take place on those, some of the folks in the government employees who have been working long-term on a certain project, I believe a SWOT analysis is important, for example, to see to, again, if there are any personal agendas, because the lack of competency in regards with not abiding with what our community is in need of, that is where we are going down, and I believe SWOT analysis should be right into our government field, especially the county officials, the township, villages, councils in the city, this, these are my examples.
All right, Julie?
What do you think makes you the best candidate for this job?
I believe I represent very humbly, I have my, my major concerns in place, my importance in this field is to seek questions from our regular taxpayers, my community, the local township folks, the entire community in itself, the future ambassadors, I like to work with all ages, so for me, working with any capacity of the elderly or the younger is where I find myself fit, because I'm good here, I love listening, I'm a people person, I believe very strongly that a candidate needs all of this perspective, hard-working nature, it's important that I mingle with the crowd who has concerns, and those concerns I'd like to work on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How would you describe your computer and technology skills?
Thank you for that question, from the day one that the computers even came, I believe I was born in the iPad generation, if I may, I was probably going to say my children were born in that age, but I believe a computer is something that we have just enhanced in our day-to-day lives, I'm pretty well-versed with all kinds of normal, the basic needs in the advanced and the intermediate part of the computers, and it looks like it is our daily need, a daily part, I sometimes feel without an iPad or a computer, we probably are incomplete, so that definitely brings in about a lot of information, being a computer and internet savvy is, I think, a new thing, and I'd like to keep up with that.
Well, that concludes our questions, you have about 40 seconds, if you want to make a closing statement of any kind.
Thank you for that opportunity, really, I just love being here today, I cannot begin to tell you how highly disciplined I have made my life from the year 2009, serving in the capacity of a planning commissioner to a county, to a councilwoman, and embarked on that stage where, just worked with the various kind of people, diversity in the community, all of that has helped me grow, I cannot begin to tell you how much I am feeling proud to be a part of this great group who wants to work for the community. I've come from a very conservative family, and a Christian person, and my background in the republic, I feel, I just feel very overly humbled, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I have a heavy mind speed dial. Next time, just really send it. There we go. And it's sent, so we'll have a second one in here shortly.
What does this SWOT thing stand for again?
Strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. If you recall, we did that in the strategic analysis with MSUE.
Right.
So, should be Mr. Groves. Mr. Groves, I presume?
Yes, my name is Kevin Groves.
All right. I will give you a few minutes for an opening statement or opening comments, and then we have 15 minutes and eight questions, and so you have the floor.
Okay, my name is Kevin Groves, I was born and raised in the area, lived in Hillsdale County almost my whole life, I did a year and a half in Lowell, Indiana, didn't like it, come back home, went for a job, graduated North Adams High School, played sports, was big in the FFA, I know I heard you talk about the Roberts Rule of, you know, harder, Mr. Wiley, you know Glenn Ruder, he put that real strong into me, and I got two boys, they're 24 and 22, and one runs his own business, the other one works in Kewaider, and I think it's time to get involved in the community more, and see new faces in government, you know, and I know it's hard to get people to get involved, so.
Okay, there you go, we'll start on this side of the table most times, Julie, if you'd start with question one.
Do you have a history of working with other people and being able to build relationships in a positive way?
Yes, I do, I do, as much as I can, I try to help other people, I ride a lot of motorcycles, I belong to a group called the Sentinel Knights, and they're a child abuse and bullying organization, and we go out and help kids that are having problems with that and get involved and do that, and.
Okay, thank you. Ruth?
Do you have a history of dealing with finances in a successful way? Finances?
I worked for the school in Martha Adams, I was in charge of the bus barn budget when I worked there, my job at Aunt Millie's Bakery in Lowell, Indiana, I was the plant engineer, and my responsibility was the parts room, and we kept over a million dollars of parts, and I had to stay within my budget and make sure everything was on hand to deal with, and if it wasn't there on time, it wasn't good for you.
Why and please be as specific as possible, do you want to serve as the District Five Hillsdale County Commissioner? What's your motivation? What are you looking to accomplish if you're appointed, and what will your focus be?
Well, my motivation is, is for a long time I wanted to get involved in the local government, but do the jobs, and I traveled for a long time on my job, I was unable to do that, and now I have the opportunity to do that. My reason I want, like, is I want to help the county, I think we're doing good now, but I think some changes, you know, we gotta get moving in with the rest of the times, and I'm a conservative, so, and I don't like to spend money, but you gotta do what you gotta do, and we gotta get up to speed with the rest of the country, we need to try to get some more jobs in the county, good-paying jobs, and I'm not even sure if that's our responsibility, but, yeah, but that's one of my motivations, we need, we especially need more good jobs in the county, and also, I want to be able to get involved firsthand with, we have a big drum problem here, I think everybody knows, and we gotta do something about that, I don't know if it's education, but we gotta get on top of it, because it's getting worse.
Okay, thank you. What does due diligence mean in reference to serving as a Hillsdale County Commissioner? And give a specific example of a situation or scenario that calls for due diligence, and how would you accomplish it, and why is it or isn't it important?
I guess I'm not familiar with that word, so.
Ruth, you're good at that explanation, would you please help?
Well, if he doesn't know, I mean, that's okay, if you don't know, that's okay, but I don't think we should tell him.
Okay.
That's part of the task.
I'm good with that.
It's for you to.
Well, I, I don't know, the meaning, I mean, I would think that it means that, you know, you do your best to your ability, and always do your best, and you, and you try to help everybody in the county and help direct them with the things that they need, because they might come to me and say, hey Kevin, I need to get this done, how do I go about it? It could be some service that the county provides, and I think we should be up to date, I mean, be able to steer people in the right way, maybe, well, how to get contact for a ride to the VA, or their congressman, or things like that, and I'm not even, don't even know if that means that, but.
Sorry.
That's.
That's okay.
That's, that's. Okay, Julie, go ahead.
What are your thoughts on millage to help support the county sheriff department's efforts to provide a safe community for us all?
Well, if it's needed, like I said, you gotta get up with the times and do what you need to do, and if we, if we don't have enough in the budget to man properly now, then that's something we have to look at, but, and that's what we're gonna need to do, you know, nobody likes to get their taxes raised, but if you want the services, then you have to have the income and the means to provide them services, you can't, otherwise you don't have them.
Thank you.
Ruth? You're up.
Please explain what you would consider to be a SWOT analysis of the county government of Hillsdale County, and give at least one example for each, so SWOT analysis, one example for each.
A SWOT analysis, okay, that's another term I don't use, but I think the, overall, they're not too bad, but I think we're a little too, I can't say conservative, because I, I'm conservative, but we're a little bit slow to get up to speed on things, you know, and an example, one of them could be with the sheriff's department, if we'd known this for a long time that we need that, we should have already been out educating the people, instead of just coming out not too long before the last election, and nobody likes higher taxes, so they're all gonna go in and vote no, you know, I don't like higher taxes, and that, I'd say as an example, on that, and there's other ones, and there's, you know, a few misuses here and there, things going on, but that's not something that we'll be talking about today.
Kevin, what makes you the best candidate for the job?
I've always put my whole heart in everything I do, and I'll do my best at it, and I'll be to everything I need to be at, and I'll go out and talk to the people, I'll be. be to everything I need to be at, and I'll go out and talk to the people, I'll be attending meet, you know, their local meetings and see what's going on in their townships, and go meet all the supervisors and, you know, what do we need to do to help make this Board Five better and the whole county? But you got to be involved.
How would you describe your computer and technology skills?
They're fair. They're not as good as my boys, but they're way better than my parents. They don't even have one, so, but I'm on the computer quite often. I like to learn. I'm always looking up stuff to learn, you know, all different subjects, but, or if I'm watching TV and I see something that, oh, yeah, that's interesting, I'm figuring out what it is right now, so I try to stay up to date.
Well, that concludes your eight questions. You have a few minutes. You can do a closing statement, and then we'll go, then you can join, you know, the audience.
Well, like I said, I want to mainly help the community. I'm going to do my very best. I'm going to be very involved. I'm going to be very available. Get ahold of me if somebody needs you 24/7. So that's all I got to say, and thank you for my consideration.
Okay, thank you. It'd be easier just calling.
How are you with that phone?
With this phone, not with the darn... I should have told him I do it on Messenger. I'm better at messaging than with Messenger.
I kind of noticed that. No, there's not an issue. He's actually smart enough to not offer the game.
Good, Derry's watching, so... Welcome, Gary.
Good morning.
Candidate number three, Mr. Neiniger. You'll have 15 minutes, and as I have with the other candidates, I'll allow you an opening statement, and then we'll start with the questions.
Thank you, Chairman Wiley. Honorable Commissioners, when this position became open, I decided I would apply for it. I love county government. I wouldn't have spent 40 years in it if I didn't thoroughly enjoy it. And in the spring of 2018, when John Brucka announced that he was not going to run again, I seriously considered running for the seat at that point in time. But when I became aware that Tim Shaw was going to run for the job, I chose not to run. I knew that Tim was on the Somerset Township Board, that he was a longtime fire chief in Addison, and I thought that Tim would do a good job running, representing the district, and so I chose not to, you know, throw my hat in the ring at this point in time. So now we have a seat that's wide open through the end of 2020. I was a county commissioner for four years. I started in county government in 1977, and I served for four years as a county commissioner. I spent the last two years on the finance committee. I was chair of the finance committee in 1980. I had a lot of great teachers. Most of those people are now deceased. Earl Fitzgerald, here in the city of Hillsdale, longtime county commissioner, and Olin Hinkle from Litchfield, who, incidentally, he and I shared the same birthday, November the 3rd. He was 22 years older than me and became like a second father to me. So, you know, I'm running because I have, still have this love for county government. I have the time, the energy, and the desire to be involved. I believe that I can hit the ground running. I have, you know, a good understanding of many of the issues that you're dealing with. I don't have a magic wand to strike and bring in a bunch more revenue to solve your problems. At the same token, I come simply because I want to serve, I believe that good government is important to all of our citizens. I have no agenda, I have no axe to grind, and so that's why I put my hat in the ring.
I'll start the questions this time. Do you have a history of working with other people and being able to build relationships in a positive way?
I believe I do, and let me give you, you know, some illustrations. In 1992, the county was in bad shape financially, far worse than you are today. And I came to the Board of Commissioners and I said, you know, we've got to do something. We're going to end this year in the red. At that point in time, the medical care facility and our ambulance providers were being supplemented out of the county general fund. I said, we can't do that any longer. We had gone through an eight-year period where we had no growth in our tax base, none, and inflation was about three times as high then as it has been in recent years. So I got the board convinced to put two mileage issues on the ballot in 1992. Three-quarters of a mile for the medical care facility, a quarter of a mile for ambulance services. I was involved with a committee of citizens to sell that to the people. I knew that it was going to take a lot of effort. We couldn't just sit on our hands and expect it to pass. And it took some money as well, and I was involved in helping with the fundraising. I chaired the educational committee. We had people speak at every township board meeting, school board meeting, city council meeting, village council meeting, public service groups, you name it. And in the end, we ended up winning both of those with about a 56, 58% yes vote. Many people thought it would be impossible to do that, even to get them passed. In 2006, the Board of Commissioners was struggling with needing an elevator in the courthouse. It's an issue that there were probably at least a half a dozen plans that had been paid for over the last 40 years to put an elevator in that building. And the number one challenge was, where are we going to get the money to pay for? I was involved in a meeting with Commissioners, and I said, look, I said, the tax foreclosure process, we're generating far more money than anybody ever expected we would generate, and I believe that's going to continue going forward. And I said, you have some money in your building improvement fund, and we can use these excess revenues from the sale of delinquent tax foreclosure properties, and we can pay for this, you know, without going deeply in debt. And so that's what we did. Bruce, when you first got elected, you came in and sat in my office, asked me a bunch of questions about county finances. Then you posed a question, so where's the hidden money? And my answer to you was, we don't have any hidden money in Hillsdale County. I've always believed that we needed to use those resources that we had and keep taxes as low as possible for our citizens and provide the services that we could.
Okay. We've got seven more questions, and we got eight minutes, so...
Okay.
I'm just giving you a time update, so go ahead, Bruce.
Do you have a history of dealing with finances in a successful way?
That's a rhetorical question for you.
Yeah, during the course of my years of service, I was the county's fiscal officer under the Budget Act for over 25 years. Heavily involved in putting the budget together and during the course of the year making sure that we stayed on course. I was responsible for, you know, investing the county's investment pool, which ranged from eight to, quote, $14 million, and did it successfully.
Ruth?
I think Gary already answered this, but it's why, and please be specific as possible, do you want to serve as the District Five Hillsdale County Commissioner? What is your motivation? What are you looking to accomplish if you are appointed? What will your focus be?
Okay.
I kind of already answered that in your opening statement.
Well, if I could just add briefly, it would be my goal to try to attend as many township board meetings as possible if I'm appointed to serve in this capacity, because I think that's important, communicating with the four townships and the one village that I represent. In addition to that, I do have another focus. I think you're all aware that we lost our youngest son two years ago. He battled deep depression and ended his life with a suicide on the 25th of October of 2017. I'm really concerned about a lot of the farmers in the southern part of the county today. We had a terrible spring planting season, and now we're in a terrible fall harvest season. And the people, the guys out there that don't have crop insurance, they've got a lot of tough days ahead, and I've already been involved in some meetings trying to reach out to farmers who are facing a lot of stress during these times. And so that would be one of my goals, to make mental health a focus.
Thank you. Julie?
What does due diligence mean in reference to serving as a Hillsdale County Commissioner? And give a specific example of a situation or scenario that calls for due diligence, and how you would accomplish it, and why it is or isn't important?
Well, my understanding of due diligence is that you need to do your homework. You know, you need to study all sides of an issue before you make a decision. And that's important, you know, in our relationships as board members and in your relationships with the elected and the appointed officials. County government's most successful when we work as a team. Teamwork is so important. You know, and I've seen the extremes, where a number of years ago, the nominee county, the chair of the Board of Commissioners harassed the county clerk to the point that the county clerk committed suicide. That board chairman was recalled from office not long after that, because he didn't understand the limits of his role and the role of the county clerk. At the same time, this guy was a friend of mine, Alcona County Treasurer, 2006, 2007. He thought he was untouchable. Somehow he got wrapped up in a Nigerian scam. When it was all over and I finally found out what was going on, over $2 million of county money had been shipped overseas, created a tremendous financial problem for Alcona County, which is a population of less than 10,000 people. People weren't doing their due diligence there, you know? And he thought he was king and didn't have to answer to anybody, which is a terrible position for anybody in public office to be in.
Thank you.
What are your thoughts on a mileage to help support the county's sheriff department, department's efforts to provide a safe community for all of us?
I think, given the financial situation that we're in in Hillsdale County, I think it's necessary and important. But I think in order to get something like that passed, those in positions of leadership and others as well are going to have to do what we did in 1992, and all put our shoulders to the wheel and go out and do an educational program and raise some money, you know, for some advertising to get the job accomplished. It won't happen if we just count on the sheriff to carry all the butter himself.
Please explain what you would consider to be a SWOT, S-W-O-T, SWOT analysis of the county government of Hillsdale, and if you can, give one example of each.
Is that an acronym?
That's an acronym.
I don't even understand what it means.
We can't tell you what it means. That's part of the, that's part of the question, so if you don't know what it means, that's okay.
I'll just be honest and tell you, I don't know what it means.
That's all right. That's no problem.
Next question, Bruce.
What makes you the best candidate for the job?
Well, first of all, I would say the knowledge and experience that I have that I bring to the table regarding county government. Secondly, I still have a desire and the energy to serve in this capacity. I'm an open, honest person. My telephone number has always been in the phone book. I've had taxpayers come to my home, taxpayers, you know, call me on the phone. I have never hid from anybody in my 40 years in county government or my almost three years on the school board. And, you know, I believe that for government to work successfully, we need, number one, open communication, and, number two, cooperation between all the players.
How would you describe your computer and technology skills?
Okay, at this point in time, I'm not a computer person, but I know that, you know, you guys use an iPad, and I have some children and some grandchildren that will help to get up to speed to do what I need to do if I'm appointed to fill this position.
Thank you.
Well, Gary, we're out of time.
Okay.
And I appreciate you coming in. You may join the audience, and we'll continue the process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you see anybody come down the hall?
Mr. Chair.
Please.
Mr. Pecal was notified, and I did follow up, that he did receive an email.
Say that again?
Bernie Pecal, did he?
Yeah.
I can see it.
He showed up a little late, but, yeah, Julie, that's why she stepped out.
Okay.
To escort him down to the break room, so, thank you. Bruce, I brought you some extra, just in case. Oh, okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is where I go, right here?
Yes, we have the podium, and we've got eight questions, the same eight questions we've asked of all the candidates, and you've got 15 minutes to answer the eight questions and a brief opening statement, if you would, please. So the floor is yours.
My name is Bernard Pecal, Bernie. Bernie. The only one that calls me Bernard is when my wife's a little bit irritated. I have lived in Hillsdale County all my life. In fact, my family came to Hillsdale County in 1837. I've raised my family here. I've done a lot of volunteer work. I love one of the crown jewels of the county, the Hillsdale County Fair. Been involved with the fair for 20 years. I believe that Hillsdale County is a great place. It's a great place to live. It's a great place to own a farm. And I believe that the people of Hillsdale County pretty much are morally intact. And I want to see it stay that way.
Okay, thank you, Bernie. Ruth, why don't you start this time, please?
Do you have a history of working with other people and being able to build relationships in a positive way?
Well, I think so. I was, worked in industry. I've been a lifelong farmer, but I worked in industry for 36 years. I worked for Hayes Elgin Corporation in Jackson, Michigan. I ended up, I was the Personnel Director. I believe that the most important thing that I've done to associate with, in other people is probably the fair. The Hillsdale County Fair, you know, it's the biggest volunteer organization in the country. And you have to, volunteers are a lot different than employees, you know? You can kind of boss employees around, but you know, volunteer, you had better get too bossy with them. You ought to try to reach consensus.
Okay. Bruce, your turn.
Do you have a history of dealing with finances in a successful way?
Well, yes. I have been, outside of my own personal business, I've been a farmer. And, you know, you've got to be kind of a financial genius to be a farmer. But I've been fundraising chairman at the fair for over 10 years. And we fundraise, you know, fifty to sixty thousand dollars there a year. And we have to do that to maintain that fair. There's 42 buildings there, and it's really a job to keep the fair running. And I guess the fundraising at the fair is one of the biggest financial things that I've been involved in in my, in my life.
Okay. Why, and please be as specific as possible, do you want to serve as District Five County Commissioner? What is your motivation? What are you looking to accomplish if you are appointed? And what will your focus be?
I have no agenda. I have no axe to grind. As I mentioned in my opening statement, I believe that Hillsdale County is a great place. It's a great place to live. It's a great place to raise a family. And that would be my agenda, to try to work to keep it that way. You know, there's nothing that's probably more irritating to me than when you hear, and probably it's not a good idea to get political, but when you hear the liberal elites say that us Mid-Americans with a gun in one hand and a Bible on the other hand, that we're deplorable. Well, I don't think we are deplorable. But it would be my goal to keep Hillsdale County, Hillsdale County.
Okay, good.
What does due diligence mean in reference to serving as a Hillsdale County Commissioner? And give a specific example of a situation or scenario that calls for due diligence, and how you would accomplish it, and why it is or isn't important.
Well, I guess I would have to, not sure I completely understand the question, but if it's like being diligent is like persevering, you know, I would, I think that's one of my traits. I would, if I got a job to do, if it's perseverance that's needed, I'll stick with the task until, until I accomplish the job.
Thank you.
Okay. And what are your thoughts on a millage? I'm just mad. I jumped, well, okay, we'll go back this way. What are your thoughts on a millage to help support the county sheriff's department's efforts to provide a safe community for us all?
Well, I think to intelligently answer that question, I would need to know all the circumstances of why a millage would be necessary. I believe that the number one purpose of government certainly is safety, certainly is protection, to protect me from you and you from me. I would have, I'll have to admit that I'm not a big, big on millage. I think we're overtaxed in this country. I did, in my lifetime, I was a, I'm a level two, or I was a level two tax assessor. I assessed both Somerset Township and Wheatland Township. So I have a good idea of property taxes and a good idea of what millage does. It's not something that, it's been a few years since I've done that, but I was at one time involved in the property tax.
Okay. Bruce?
Please explain what you would consider to be a SWOT, S-W-O-T, it's an acronym, analysis of the county government of Hillsdale County.
Well, once again, I'm not sure I know what SWOT is, but I believe that government in Hillsdale County has been good. You know, I, I'm from a township that has a lot of government. We, Somerset Township runs a police department and a fire department. And I think that the government pretty much has been responsive to the people.
What makes you the best candidate for the job?
What I would like you people to look at is not necessarily on my resume, not necessarily what I've done for a living, what I've done that I didn't get paid for. And starting out in Somerset Township, I'm a charter member, a founding member of the Somerset Township Fire Department, excuse me. We started that fire department with nothing and done a lot of fundraising. And the firemen in Somerset Township worked for many years without pay. It was a volunteer department. I spent many years on the North Adams Area Recreation Program. For you that are familiar with North Adams, there's property right beside the school, ball fields and tennis courts. It's not school property. That property originally was owned by the Somerset Township, Wheatland Township, Adams Township, and the Village of North Adams. I was involved in that, ran summer programs. We ran ball programs for both boys and girls. We ran tennis programs for both boys and girls. Something kind of interesting to me, one of the members, or one of the people on this list, Kevin Grubbs, was on a Little League baseball team that I coached. I guess, I guess that's all that is, is I'm older than Kevin Grubbs. But my biggest volunteer effort in this county has been the fair. Like I say, I spent 20 years there. I've been on the Board of Directors 20 years. I've been vice president. I've been superintendent of the horticulture area. And I love the fair. I have been politically active in the county. I've worked on Nick Smith's elections. I, both when he was running for, I was Township Supervisor when Nick started, when he ran for state rep. And then I worked for his election committee when he was in Congress. I'd done a huge amount of work for Mike Knod, especially when Mike first started. I was on Bruce Caswell's first election committee. If you want to know a little trivia, I won't tell you. You'll have to ask him about Bruce. Ask him someday why he wears designer eyeglasses now. But, but that's what I would like to have you as a commissioner, as me being a commissioner to look at. Those things are not necessarily what I've done to make a living, but the things that I've done to volunteer for the community.
How would you describe your computer and technology skills?
I would be an excellent poster boy for why a person shouldn't have a smartphone.
Thank you.
And my biggest problem there is my grandkids live about an hour from me, so, you know, I don't get a lot of help. But I do have a smartphone.
I've always said I don't want a phone that's smarter than I am. Well, Bernie, you still got a few minutes. You can make a closing statement. That's the extent of our questions, so you have a few minutes to make a closing statement.
Well, to make a closing statement, it would be just repetition. I'm here because I think Hillsdale County is a great place. I have toyed with the idea of running for commissioner before in my life, but at the time that I did, Ken Altenheiser was commissioner. And I was friends with Ken, and I never, you know, I didn't want to run against him. And I didn't have time. You know, I didn't have the time then to commit to the, to the job. But, and not to repeat, I don't have an agenda. I don't have an axe to grind. I just, I just think that Hillsdale County is a, is a great place. And if you look at the church I go to, Somerset Congregational Church, we're 161 years old. A lot of churches are that old. That's nothing. The Hillsdale County Fair is 170 years old. You know, I guess Hillsdale County is older than that. So, you know, for those places to be here that long and to prosper, they've all prospered, something's right. Something's right about the county. And I'd like to, I'd like to see that, say it that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bernie. You may join the audience at this time, and we'll, we've got two more candidates, and then we'll deliberate. Go ahead, Bruce. I'll take a very brief break. Restroom break, if anyone else wishes to.
I've got to keep recording.
That's fine.
Because I don't want to.
That's fine. People can watch her smiling faces. So, let's see. Maybe I'm very...
I'm sorry, sir.
You should invite someone down. You got better views than that. All right.
P-O-L-A-R-D.
Thanks for coming today. Thank you very much. I'd like to get some...
Did I say that?
Yes.
We talked about that.
Chris.
Thank you.
Powered, P-O-L-A-R-D. Thank you.
We're taking a break.
It's our next candidate.
We have our next candidate.
I was taking a break in there.
Did please call order. John, welcome.
Hey, thank you.
So we've got eight questions, as I said earlier. You've got 15 minutes. We'll allow you for a brief opening statement, as I've done with the others, and then we'll commence with the eight questions.
Opening statement?
Yes.
Does this where I'd like you to give your speech? Well, I just want to let the commissioners know that if I am selected to serve for District Five, not only would they get a, get the only bald commissioner, they'll get an honest, respectful, forthright, accountable, and very humble representative. I do have open availability. I work from home. My door and phone is nearly, is open nearly 24/7 to the community, as is today. So it's not going to change if I'm a commissioner. I'm very tolerant. I'm not quick to judge. This is actually an area that with my peers, they tend to scold me on because they want me to be less tolerant a lot of times. I'm a go-getter. Everything I do in life, just about, is self-taught. Although my wife says I'm cheap, I'm a strong fiscal conservative. I'm assuming Bruce's wife probably calls him cheap too, because he's a conservative, fiscal conservative. In all honesty, if I'm appointed, all 9,770 citizens of Wright Township, Pittsford Township, Wheatland Township, Somerset Township, and the Village of Waldron will get something rare, special. They'll get a true, strong, constitutional, principle-minded representative. As far as the county board goes, I'm very direct with communication, written and verbally. I have many, I've had many very long and direct, respectful conversations with all four A members. Although most of my communications through Julie and Ruth, I can tell you what, surprisingly, my longest talks have been with Commissioner Mark Wiley. I swear, he loves talking on the phone. We get going, we're like teenage girls. None of us have had any miscommunication, in my opinion. I don't know how you guys is in, but for me. I'm super interested in nearly everything to deal with government. I truly love learning about government systems and becoming a more informed citizen. Assigning me to committees shouldn't be too difficult. My ears are close to the ground, and I avoid insulating myself from chatter and noise. In fact, I pursue it and embrace it. And I do really well at it. With the ever-growing online activism that is going on today, I'd make a great ambassador to that from the county board. I noticed that we have this cliche in government, and Julie and we talk about this quite often. We all seem to want new people to get on. We want to see young people run for office and get politically involved. But if you look around, look at the average age of the county board, and look what the average age has been for the last 20 years. Commissioner Mark, Julie, Bruce, Ruth, God bless you all. This will be a tough decision to make today. You have six great people, they're all qualified, they're all caring, and we all would be honored to represent District Five for Hillsdale County. For me, it would be amazing work to work with you guys, making this board more special, creative, and diverse than it has in the years prior. I sincerely thank you for your ongoing hard work, and I truly do appreciate your consideration for this is a very important role for local governments. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce, your turn.
Do you have a history of working with other people and being able to build relationships in a positive way?
Yes, I do.
Can you explain?
Sure. I, yeah, I, not only in my...
And I've had up to probably close to 30 employees now, in my lifetime, and I've had to work really well with them. And I don't think I've had any disgruntled employees, ever.
Ruth.
Do you have a history of dealing with finances in a successful way? Finances?
Yeah, I, I've owned my business for almost 15 years. I don't live off credit. I've done everything in life in cash. So, as you guys know, inflation rises. Everything gets, all the electronics and things of that nature go down, the food cost goes up, the energy cost goes up, housing goes up. I've been, every year, I've been able to accumulate more successfully. And I'm able to actually evaluate, because I have friends and friends that have business stuff, they have me come and evaluate what they could do to improve in their business for finances as well. So every single year, my finances have gotten, has improved, for sure.
Okay, Julie.
Why, and please be specific as possible, do you want to serve as the District Five Hillsdale County Commissioner? What is your motivation, and what are you looking to accomplish if you are appointed? What will be your focus?
That's the number one question I thought that you guys would ask. Let me give you a short answer, then I'll dive in a little bit more. In short, the force of moral obligation, right? It's my duty. I believe it's everybody's duty to be, participate in local government. We all know that the average citizen don't vote. It's just, the numbers clearly show that. We live in a very dynamic situation in today's society, and this is where I was going to go into why I think I'd make a great, I'd make a great Commissioner, is because we got more diversity, it seems like now than ever, in my opinion, that I've seen with different philosophies and politics in general. I mean, we got a lot of, a lot of diversity in our own community. I think the biggest, or the biggest focus that I'll focus on is trying to figure out platforms, because I think, I think the local people have a certain level of expectation of government employees, and I think government employees have a certain level of idea on what the citizen should be doing. And I think there's a disconnect between that, and I think it's our job to figure out how to not have that disconnected, and get multiple platforms, and getting communication to these people. I think communication and education is the way to fix this, but you have, I think we really have to take a big focus on this and figure out why we're getting so much diversity, and I think we can do that.
What does due diligence mean in reference to serving as a Hillsdale County Commissioner? And give a specific example or situation or scenario that calls for due diligence, and how would you accomplish it, and why is it or isn't it important?
Due diligence is, let me give you an example. I had Chris Pollard come into my, we did a podcast last night with Chris Pollard over in Wheatland Township. They got a lot of windmills going over there. Now, Chris Pollard is against the windmills coming in, so I got all the evidence to say why it's bad to have that there, right? Well, I could slap that online and take that position, right? And complain about that. Due diligence is me calling their board members, figuring out their opinion, having them come on the podcast, figure out why they want those windmills there, why it's important to them. Due diligence is calling all 15 members, whether it be the zoning board administrator, whether it be their planning commission. And this is what I do, and as my peers, and as I think some of you know, like Penny knows, I make the calls. I make the effort. I make the time to go up there and interview them, whether it goes on camera, whether it doesn't go on camera, whether it goes, I make the extra effort. Due diligence is doing all you can to do to get the right, the right viewpoint out there. And sometimes it's tough to do, but I do make the extra effort to do so.
Okay, Bruce.
What are your thoughts on a millage to help support the County Sheriff's Department's efforts to provide a safe community for us all?
Yeah, so this is the philosophy change that I think a lot of people have, different, in particular in our county, and we're seeing the divide and growth between citizen and police, more so than citizen and government. As far as a millage goes, my philosophy with millages is probably slightly different, because you, obviously Bruce, I commented to you about the idea of using democracy to undermine the republic, using, using democracy to vote in millages. Millages is a tough one for me, because I don't like the idea of taking money from other people to pay for what I want. Okay, so millages are, to be honest with you, a hard area for me to, to push on, okay? I think we can have our cake and eat it too. I don't think we have to do it through a millage. I think we have to learn and figure out ways of doing fundraising, or ways to get pledges, because I know we have pledges in one time or another in Hillsdale County, from what I understand. I think we need to focus on some of those areas. Not to say that all millages are going to go away, you can't do it, that's like, it's just impossible to do so, right? But I think we need to start focusing on these other ways of making money. And I got to congratulate Somerset Center, I got a letter in the mail, they're trying to raise $15,000 for a certain device, a lifesaving device. They didn't take it straight to a millage, they're actually sending out letters trying to get pledges. I have to commend them. Now, I don't know how they got the money to send that letter out, right? So that's something I got to look into. But I got to give them kudos for giving it a shot, right? This is something that I think we need to start investigating and start working on, instead of just going right to a millage and taking money from people.
Please explain what you would consider to be a SWOT analysis of the County Government of Hillsdale County, and provide at least one example for each.
A SWOT? Can you describe that a little bit better?
No, that's what you're supposed to do.
Oh, wow. Could you re, ask the question again?
Please explain what you would consider to be a SWOT analysis of the County Government of Hillsdale County, and give an exam, give at least one example for each.
Wow, I'll be honest with you, I don't, I'm not going to lie, I don't know what that means, other than just maybe a descriptive of the County Government. I mean, I think, I think this Board is majority conservative. I think this Board is definitely transparent, and you guys, you guys are very open. And I think you guys are loving and caring individuals, and I think you guys want what's best for your, for your community as well. And by picking up the phone alone, it's amazing, because I've called to all you guys, and, but I honestly don't know what SWOT means.
That's okay, no problem. Keep going.
What makes you the best candidate for the job?
Um, and that's a, that's a real subjective thing too, right? But I'm probably, I believe that I'm, I'm the best candidate, because I'm already active. I'm already out there. A lot of people know who I am. I'm very direct, and I don't have a lot of problems, I guess you could say, as far as communication with everybody in all these other communities. I know, I know pretty much a lot of the people in my district already, I, I think they, I have really good rapport with all of them. I think my qualification shows that, I think my resume reflects directly what citizens are supposed to be doing in their community, as far as political, or being an activist in the community, as far as going up to meetings, getting their information, and being able to relay it to other people that otherwise don't vote or don't know the information. And I think I probably, and I don't want to speak for the other people that are, that are up here, that became up here, because I think they're great people, but I'm probably more active than them.
Thank you.
Question number eight. How would you describe your computer and technology skills?
I'll be honest with you, I had a computer repair shop in Somerset Center for a little while. I didn't put it on my resume, because I just did it for the community for the most part. I still get the calls from all lately in, in Somerset just about, that want me to come fix a computer, and I got to tell them no. I'm slightly behind, I'd say I'm probably about three, four years behind the time, keeping it real. I could fix a standard computer, I can, I can, I could talk to Mr. Holcomb and actually understand his lingo and language. I don't have any problems with that. But technology's moving fast. Four years is actually a long time, right? So I can't build websites. You know, everybody thinks a computer repairman can hack sites and do websites, and that's not what that's about. And so I was very surface when I did it. I think I could handle anything that this county has for technology. I didn't know how to podcast, I podcast now. I didn't know how to do cameras and stuff, I do that now. So I can handle anything technology you guys got, it's just, but if you want to know where I'm at today, I'm probably about four years behind.
That's fine. You've got about a minute, if you want to make a closing statement.
Again, you know, I pretty much already said my closing statement, but I just want to say thank you guys. I do appreciate having us come up here and do this. I, I know it's a weird situation, having six people come in, and it's, you guys are discussing this, and it's going to be kind of, it's, I don't know, it's kind of weird. I didn't, I never experienced this before. And, and I just want to say, again, so thank you. That's it.
Thank you, John. We're just trying to be open and transparent.
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
Well, I was trying to save, I was trying to save photos the other day to my phone, like, it's called a GIF, where it's a motion photo. And man, I could not get it, see it to my phone, it kept going to my memory card, and I'm like, man, how do I do the settings? I was getting so far, I had to Google it, yeah.
The thing with that though, Mark, is use what works for you. Use what works for you.
Yeah, yeah. Well, these get broke a lot less around the farm.
Exactly.
So, good morning.
Good morning.
I'll get my timer set here, and we've got 15 minutes for eight questions. And then I'll allow you an opening statement, and we'll get on with questions, and the same eight questions that we've asked everyone, just as I said before.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Please continue.
Well, I guess first of all, I'd like to start out by saying, I'm a Wheatland Township resident. I did run for trustee, lost out to John Ray. But I want to be able to serve the public as a County Commissioner, and I believe that I can be impartial and keep my personal feelings set aside.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to start?
Go ahead, start.
Do you have a history of working with other people and being able to build relationships in a positive way?
Yes, as you can see on my resume, I did volunteer work at Pittsford School, Santa Secret Shop, different fundraisers, and I had to communicate with not just the principal, which was Keith Brown at the time, I also had to communicate with parents and the volunteers that was working underneath.
Do you have a history of dealing with finances in a successful way?
Yeah, I'm a penny pincher. My husband will tell you that. If we need, say, we need groceries, but a bill is due, I will pinch every penny, and I will cut that grocery list right down to the bare minimum, to make sure that the bills get paid on time, and to make sure that we don't starve either.
Okay, Bruce.
Why, and why, and be as, please be as specific as possible, do you want to serve as a District Five Hillsdale County Commissioner? What's your motivation? And what are you looking to accomplish if you're appointed? What will your focus be?
Well, first of all, I think I want to serve the public in a positive way, and I think I can do the job impartial, and to benefit all the communities that is involved, and not just subject, I won't be subject on Wheatland Township, because that's where I'm from. I will do what's best for all the townships that is involved.
Go ahead.
What does due diligence mean in reference to serving as a Hillsdale County Commissioner? And give a specific example of a situation or a scenario that calls for due diligence. How would you accomplish, how would you accomplish it? Why is it or is not important?
Well, first of all, I think it's very important, and I think due diligence is if you've got a problem that you're facing, that it means to investigate all aspects of positive or negative, to be able to draw a conclusion that is right for the people.
What are your thoughts on a millage to help support the County Sheriff's Department's efforts to provide a safe community for all of us?
Well, I think a safe community is very important. In the lines of a millage, whether it be to increase it or keep it at what it is now, I think that would have to be investigated to see exactly what they need, and if, if it's valid.
Thank you.
Please explain what you would consider to be a SWOT analysis of the County Government, of the County Government of Hillsdale County. Give at least one example, please.
You say SWOT, and I'm thinking SWAT team. You know, I really don't know how to answer that one, to be honest. Because like, like I said, when you say SWAT, I'm thinking SWAT team with body armor and, you know.
Bruce, what makes you the best candidate for the job?
Well, I'd have to say, I've done a lot of volunteer work, I've worked with the public. At the present time, I am studying to be a paralegal, one test to go. I also serve as my husband's secretary, he is Wheatland Township Supervisor, so I'm always answering the phone for him. I do go to the township meetings occasionally, I don't go every month, it gets me repetitive. But I think I would be good, because I think I can serve the public the way the public, be somebody that the public could be proud of.
How would you describe your computer and technology skills?
I'd say they're pretty good. They're not excellent, but I can make my way around a computer pretty good.
Well, that concludes the eight questions. You've got several minutes if you'd like to make a closing statement.
Just, I'm glad to be here, and I'm glad to be considered, and I just want to say thank you for your time. And I know this is not an easy decision for you guys to make, and I just trust that you make the right decision, whether it be me or somebody else. And I, I believe that, I tried to answer your questions the best I could, at least they're honest. So, but I guess that'd be about it. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. So just for clarity, I don't want anybody to walk away wondering what SWOT is, especially the SWAT team, because that's not what I, what I'm asking. SWOT is a common analogy or acronym within the business world, and I have a business degree, so SWOT is looking at the M of E as far as its strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. It's also something we went through here about a year ago, when we did strategic planning with MSUE, which we're still working on, or attempting to. So, with that said, we are going to go into discussion and deliberation. What we had discussed is taking a sheet of paper, we'll pass out a sheet to each of the Commissioners. We will put our name on it, and then put our top two. Then Jody will read the list, to be in compliance with the Open Meetings Act, and hence putting our name on it, and our two candidates keeps it open, and Jody will read by name our top two, and then we will start our deliberation.
We can discuss first, and then write it down, or write them down first?
Writing them down first. That way we... That way we hopefully don't have to discuss them all. And that's just to help expedite the process. Yes, so Jody...
I scored mine, so I just took the top two scores.
Jody will read these out and then we'll proceed with our deliberation.
Commissioner Wiley's choices are Namrata, did I say that correctly? And Gary Linegar.
And who?
Gary Linegar. Julie Gaines' choices are Namrata and John Smith. Crusher Caswell is Kevin Grubbs and John Smith. And Ruth Brown's choices are Namrata and Gary Linegar.
All right. So, that basically, the way I counted folks is Namrata, Kevin, Gary, and John Smith are not that it was a vote, but it was our top picks by the four of us. So those are the four that we need to narrow down to at least two or three to actually go into a voting process unless there's suggestions or comments.
Who were they again?
Namrata, Kevin Grubbs, Gary Linegar, and John Smith. And before we go any further, I would like to sincerely thank Bernie and Tina for coming in and being a part of the process. And you're welcome to stay until we're done, of course. I just wanted to make sure I thank you at this time. But we need to discuss those four names and get it down to either two or three and then take a vote. So, any suggestions or comments for this juncture?
Well, I'll start. Somebody's got two.
Thank you.
I think that we have excellent candidates. I think that all six. And even now that we're down with four, I think it's a very difficult decision because I think they're all good. And I think that we could sit here and say very good things about all of them. So I'm not saying bad things about any of them. I think they're all strong candidates and it's a very difficult decision. I think we're fortunate to have that many candidates up here with that good of backgrounds. Now, I think that this is a very short term because it's only until December of 20 that they're filling out, right? And so that's a little over a year, a year and two months. I was appointed once a long time ago in the middle of a term and had to, you have to get up to speed quick. And I was only in until the next, to fill out Park's term, when I started out. And so this person has to come in here and in a very short year and two months, you know, has got a short time to accomplish a lot of work. And we have the budget ahead of us and we have a lot of things ahead of us. And I'd like to see somebody that has experience, that can hit the ground running and get up with us as fast as possible. So in that mind, I'm looking at who has some experience. So I thought Namrata because she had, because she's been on the Hudson City Council before. I was on city council before also. She has some background as being an elected official. The other person that I thought was Gary for a couple of different reasons. Gary talked, Gary, I wrote down pretty much everything that everybody said. Gary used the terminology county government a lot of different times during his speech. And when I very first became a county commissioner, I had other commissioners talking to me about county government a lot. And they would say, you need to learn county government, you need to understand how county government works. If you don't, you're not going to be able to be a very good commissioner. So when he kept saying that, I think that was good. I think that he gave examples of what he's done and accomplished in the past of some things that we need to accomplish in the future. Like he said, he passed a millage in 1992 that no one said they could and we have to do that now for our sheriff's millage, possibly. The other thing that I think set Gary aside, as far as I was concerned, that nobody else brought up was mental health. He talked about mental health and he talked about farmers in the southern part of the county and their stress. And he talked about how his son had committed suicide. And no other candidate talked about that and I think that that's something that needs to be talked more about, especially because we live in a rural county and we do have a lot of farmers here. And I think that Gary has got a lot of experience behind him. So for those two reasons, again, I think all the candidates were strong. But since it's such a short term of only a year and two months, we need, in my opinion, we need somebody with experience that can hit the ground running. So Namrata because she was on Hudson City Council and Gary because of his service in government and for the other reasons that I already, that I already said.
I just want to make one comment. Farmers in the west part of the county are struggling.
It looks like they are everywhere.
But just to keep it light.
Yeah, yeah.
But I get the point. It is real. It's nationwide. And Ruth and I have talked about this, farmers are probably only second right now to veterans. And the list varies from month to month, but suicide and mental problems is huge.
Right.
Huge. So, Julie?
I, my two choices were Namrata and John Smith. And I actually just did my own score. I made up a scoring grid and they were my top two score people, although the other ones were close, they were the top two that came out on top. And I think mainly for me, it's Namrata's experience, not only with city council, but also with planning commission. Mark and I, being the chair and the vice chair, we're going to do appointments for all the commissioner assignments for next year. We could really use somebody with planning experience. I think it's very valuable. John, however, also has a lot of skills that he is out in the public. He's very communicative with citizens. He's probably more technology savvy, even though he said he was four years behind than the rest of us. And so I think there's a lot of areas that he would also be beneficial to the commission.
So Namrata, as I listened and as I looked through her resume, and one thing she made comment of this morning, I can't really see you there, but thanks Ruth. One thing that's been near and dear, and I know Bruce and I have worked diligently to try and, and you mentioned CIP. And we've been trying to tuck a little money away to make sure we maintain our buildings and stuff. And so that kind of struck a chord with me. As Julie indicated, the planning commission, we desperately need somebody with some actual experience in that area. I think it's critical, I know some of the discussions I've had with Nick over the years, there is a role, whether it be city or county planning commissions. So I found it interesting that she mentioned the opioid issue. Oddly enough, I've got to return a phone call to Mark Bernstein. He's left messages on both phones to give us an update on where we're at in that particular lawsuit that we joined in on. So I find it interesting that your comments kind of coincide with his call today. And of course, your comments on the state implications as far as the governor's axing different items that truly hinder rural Michigan. So, and hopefully the legislative body can address some of that. And Gary, once again, I guess I have to echo some of the things that Ruth said. Experience. I mean, it's all about experience and it's all about coming in at a time where we're doing the budget. And yes, her comments are valid that it's a 14-month stint, but I would assume, and maybe that's a bad thing to do, as we all know what assume stands for. But I would assume that whoever's appointed today would certainly run in the fall of 2020 in the regular election. But making that assumption could be dangerous. But, so maybe it's more than a 14-month stint. But, I mean, Gary's years of county government experience speak for themselves. However, with that said, the CIP comment, the planning commission experience makes me lean towards Namrata. So, Bruce, you have the floor.
Well, I hear you all talk about experience. And I had an experience. 1974, I pulled into the local hardware in North Adams. And Cal Townes said, Bruce, you ought to run for supervisor, township supervisor. I said, really? He said, yeah. I said, why? And he said, well, the guy that's doing it isn't running again. He was an older fellow. And he says, you'd be good at it. And I said, well, what do I have to do? He said, well, get petition and get two or three signatures on it and you're in. And I said, okay, I'll do it. Well, I got my petitions, I filed it. And then the older guy changed his mind and he decided to run again. And the older guy beat me in the election in 74. He was elect in the primary. He was elected in the fall of 74. Got sworn into office the same night, resigned, and they assigned another person to the job. So I'm not real big on experience, with all due respect. And if you want people to get involved in government, then you got to give them a chance to get involved with government. Now, six years later, those same people that thought I was a blithering idiot in 74 came back and asked me to run for supervisor in 1980. And the only reason they asked me was because the only guy running was a guy that moved out here from Detroit. We can't have one of them Detroit people serving there. So I ran again. That time I got elected and went from there. Well, fast forward when you folks decided that I had a half a brain in my head and I could go to Lansing. I got up there and I was one of the few people, the first term, that didn't get a committee assigned, didn't get a chairmanship of a committee. And I didn't say anything. It was obvious that they didn't think I was too bright. Well, the guy that was the chair of the committee where I was the vice chair dropped over dead two months into the term, so then they didn't have any choice, they had to appoint me to that committee. Well, two years later, they came to me and wanted to know if I'd be the chairman of the Department of Community Health Subcommittee, the biggest budget in Lansing, the biggest department in Lansing. So you got to give people a chance. Now, I'm not running again. And I'm not running again because I'm old fart. It's time for me to step down and get out of the way. And I'm serious. I know a lot, but I don't know everything. But if I don't get out of the way, there aren't going to be people that are going to run for my position. And I announced it two years early because I wanted everybody to know well ahead of time. And the one thing I'm really happy about today is there's been six of you show up here. For those of you that are out here looking at, I darn well hope there's six of you that are running for the district that I'm serving in right now. Get involved with things. Put your name out there. You may get shot down like I did at the beginning, but they may come back and ask you after a while, they may think you got half a brain in your head, okay? So I picked Kevin Grubbs. I liked his answers. He was direct, he was to the point, and I know him to be a very honest person. And I know he'll bust his tail to do what's right by people. And I know he'll listen. And the other person I picked was John Smith. He's young, he's got a lot of fire in his belly. A lot of people don't agree with what he says. Well, a lot of people haven't agreed with things I've said over the years. But I think John's honest and I think he'll listen. The times he's called me or talked to me about different issues, he's listened to what I've had to say and taken into consideration. And I think the most important thing is, if you're going to be a politician, is to shut your mouth and listen. People aren't interested in your opinion, they don't want to tell you their opinion. So that's why I voted for those two. And I'm a firm believer, you aren't going to get people involved in politics if you don't get the old duffers like me out of the way. Now, there's nobody here that's got any more knowledge and any more intelligence on finances than Gary Linegar. The guy is a walking genius. And I say that with all due respect to him. But I'm certainly not going to suit up and go out and play football anymore at my age. It's time for Kevin Grubbs and John Smith to put the uniform on. So that's why I voted the way I did. I did a little scoring thing here too, like Julie. Those are the two that came out on top, so. The nice thing about it is if we royally screw this up, a year from now, the voters can correct it, so. And you never know what you got till you hire them. You truly don't. So you do the best you can at the time and you take it from there.
All right. We've all had a chance to comment. We've got four.
And I guess, I guess the last thing I'd like to say is Bernie Finkell, I'm very good friends with. This was not easy for me personally. And I'm very good friends with Gary Linegar. It was not easy for me personally. But I tried to sit here and think about what I got to do to be consistent with what I've said in the past with other things. And so that's what I've done.
I would echo some of those same sentiments. This, you know, Hillsdale County's not a large county and so a lot of us know, some or all of the candidates personally. So it does make it more challenging. However, what's the wishes and desires of the board of how do we proceed? Do you want to vote on them one at a time or do you want to narrow it down to two or three and then take a vote? What's the pleasure here, folks?
I'll make a motion if you want me to make a motion.
We can do it that way as well.
This is really hard.
It's a very...
It's very hard.
Very hard task.
Yes, it is. I'm thinking about what Bruce said about experience. And I agree with what Bruce said. I agree with what Bruce says. However, this commissioners table is a big, big, big job and I just, I think that a person needs to start low and work their way up. You need to start on the planning commission or on the school board or on the trustees or your township trustee board, your city council, whatever elected official. I've spent years of my life trying to get women elected to public office. I worked on it for years before I ever even got up to the council. And you need to start low and work your way up. That's just my opinion. I know everybody doesn't agree with it and I respect other people's opinions. But this is a big, big, big job and you need experience, in my opinion. But this is very difficult because we've got some really good candidates here, so it's just hard to pick one.
So Ruth had mentioned to me, just to break the ice a little bit for you, Ruth. She refreshed my memory that back to the process of when she was appointed, we had narrowed it down to two or three individuals. And then one of the commissioners, and I don't recall who, and that's immaterial, but one of the commissioners made a motion such as she indicated she would do to appoint one particular one, and then we voted on it. And I kind of indicated to her that if that's the process that we want to take, that's fine. I mean, that's consistent with what we did five years ago. But if anybody has objection, please voice that. But that's where we're at, so.
Well, this is very, very difficult, but I'm going to make a motion for Gary Lineker.
Is there a support? I'll ask one more time if there's a support. Okay.
Can I make a motion?
You may.
I'm going to make a motion for Namrata Carlin.
Motion for Namrata. Is there a support?
I support that.
Ruth supports. Any further discussion on the motion? We've all heard some of the comments, but I'll allow discussion to continue. No further discussion? We'll make the roll call vote.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Caswell?
No.
District Five is vacant. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Three yes.
Three yes, one no, and one open vote since District Five was open. So at this point in time, I would make the announcement that Namrata has been appointed as District Five Commissioner. If you would please come forward, and if Marney Cass would also come forward, or should I say clerk? And she will swear you in.
Thank you.
Terese Redham, please. You solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of Office of Hillsdale County Board of Commissioners representing District Five according to the best of your ability.
I do.
When you finish there, you may take your seat here for the remainder of the meeting, which...
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, poor commissioners. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
So we only have two items left on the agenda. Two items left on the agenda will be public comment, so I will open it for public comment at this time. Bear in mind, three minutes per, and please identify yourselves. We know you're Glenn, so you're identity. Good morning.
Good morning. A little update on Cooper Road. I went, we had a meeting at our township. I brought up $26,000 as appropriation. I couldn't get a motion for it. We had a meeting with the Hillsdale County Road Commission on October 25th at 3:00. And I told them that $7,500 a day is something that might be a good deal in New York City, but we're not in New York City. I asked them how much their excavator and trucks and backhoes and what that went for an hour. And John told me, so I'm doing my math in my head, he said that it would be $1,600 for labor a day, $1,400 for the machinery. And that begged my question. I said, okay, that's $3,000. Where's the other $4,500? It didn't go well. Two and a half days' work. John Saunders figures he's got $9,000 in labor, $14,000 in equipment, and for two and a half days, $12,000 in fringe benefits. It seems, there must be a lot of money in the road commission. I don't understand. I was also told that this quote that we have, the Department of Transportation makes us do this, because, you know, they have a form. So I went to the Department of Transportation. I said, I want to see this form you guys put out for the road commission. There's no form. Shocking. I told John that when you get your numbers together and more detailed analysis of what we have, I'd like to see it. I learned some troubling thoughts. They told us that they only buy CMS corrugated metal tubes from one source. They told me they did three bids. So I said, well, you get those three bids together, and let me see them. Because the last time I asked, he said, oh, this is the lowest one. Well, that's not normal customary business practice, to my knowledge. So that's where we're at. I'm waiting to hear from them. I've had constituents call the road commission, and the road commission is telling them, we're waiting on Cambria Township. And that's a flat-out fib. So I just thought I'd give you a little update. We're pretty far apart. The MDOTI, I talked to, I says, what would a project like this be when there's a school involved? Well, he says it would be pretty high, because if it was in the summertime when they weren't there, it'd be up high. But if schools in, it'd be really high. Roads been closed for eight months, guys. Thanks.
Okay, thanks Glenn. Anyone else wish to address the board at this time?
Tim Martin. I'd like to thank you, Mr. Caswell, for that election or that appointment process we just watched. I commend you for how you stood up and wanted to bring fresh meat into the table, so to say. No disrespect to you, ma'am, at all. I don't mean any disrespect here, but that was kind of a horse and pony show, I believe. Everybody that was watching online, watching this live, Mr. Wiley, they looked on your face when she started talking. She won from the get-go. This was not what it was supposed to be. First off, I'm not really understanding why this didn't go to the people as a vote versus you, why we didn't get the choice to elect that person. I'm not too up on that, but I don't, I just don't know. That just seemed awful weird. And the whole question about the sheriff's village, we all know that was a setup for one candidate that applied, all of us do. I don't know who put that question in there, but that was used to trip somebody up. I'm not real sure why you used that. It shouldn't have had anything to do with who got elected to that position. That's all I got for you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board at this point? Penny?
Penny Swan. I will reiterate some of what Tim said. I found it very interesting that she was the only one that was here at the last meeting before Tim announced it, and she got the position. Thank you, Bruce, for sticking up and wanting to bring fresh, young people that really want to get involved in society, in government. And John has done that. He has a pulse on the community, the whole county. I just found it very weird that she was at the last meeting, spoke her piece, nobody else had that opportunity, and she has a seat.
Penny, thank you, Penny. Anyone else wish to address the board? Comments from the commissioners.
Kevin, I want you to go home and tell your wife you'll be home tonight. There were a young lady here to commission me, and called you young.
No, I get that often, and I don't understand. I look in the mirror every day, I look over.
Chris was standing up.
But thank you, Bruce.
Chris, any comment, please?
Hi, this is the first time I've ever been here. I, my name is Chris Pollard. I live in North Adams, Wheatland Township. And I haven't been able to talk to the commissioner, but now that we have a new commissioner, I'd like to talk to you of what's going on in Wheatland Township and Moscow Township with the wind turbines. We have a group called Informed Citizens of Wheatland Township. We're the majority in the township. And we've uncovered some stuff that's going on with the board, and I'd like to know if the commissioners would look into this and would do something about it. Because we're kind of a poor community, and we do have an attorney, we are fighting them, but we need outside help. And as being in Hillsdale County, I love the county. Everybody there has been there for 40, 50 years. They love their homes and that, and they don't want this to happen. And I'd like to uncover a few things that has happened with the boards in our township and explain it to you, if I could personally, thank you, and with the other commissioners too, because it is Hillsdale County. And there's a lot of people out there that are very, very concerned on what's going on. And the thing is, it's been passed already, and we didn't get a vote. We didn't get a voice. So please give us a voice, that's all I'm saying. Okay? Thank you so much.
Normally, we don't comment on public comment, but Chris, I'll make sure I put it on the agenda if you can get with Namrata between now and next Tuesday. Next Tuesday, we have a regular meeting, so she can give us a report on that. So if you can get with her between now and next Tuesday, we'll hear her report, so.
Thank you so much.
Pretty good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Thank you, Gary. And I'd like to, once again, thank all the candidates. It was refreshing to have six and be able to hear from all of you. So Ruth, do you have any closing comments?
I just want to encourage all the candidates to, I do think they should get politically active and involved, and they should get on their township board. They should run for their township board. They should run for any elected office in their area, and I would encourage all of them to do that. And I do thank them all for being here today because they were all strong candidates. I think that what we should bring up, since we don't, maybe you want to bring this up, Mark, since we don't have another meeting before next Monday, which is Veterans Day, that there's not going to be anything on the courthouse lawn like there usually has been in the past, so that people know.
I saw Renee. Oh, she just dropped something.
It's going to be at the Legion, the Hillsdale American Legion, at 11:00 AM on Monday. So I suggested to Renee that maybe somebody stand out on the courthouse lawn at about quarter to 11:00 on Monday, and because people just might start showing up not knowing. We've always had something out there for years and years and years, and some people might show up and not know. And if anybody shows up there, they can then just be directed to go to the Legion at 11:00 on Monday, not the courthouse lawn.
I'll make sure that I get, because I know Hillsdale's doing one, Jonesville, and Reading, to my knowledge. And I'll try and get that information to Sam, and I'll try and get it to reset the radio so that we can also make it, you know, announced that way. And I'm sure Sam can find a place for it, maybe even in this story, so.
And maybe, maybe David could set up a time for us to have a new picture taken, since now we have a new commissioner, maybe at the next meeting or whenever he wants to, soon.
You can do that. You can coordinate that.
Julie, is there a picture, please?
I'll talk to him.
Okay, Julie.
But just as long as we do it. So you're going to be gone next meeting, aren't you?
Yes.
So not the next meeting, then, because we don't want to do it when Julie's gone.
No, but in two weeks.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Julie, comment?
No.
Would you like?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the Board of Commissioners, all of our taxpayers. It's just an honor and privilege. It's not an easy job, like it's been said over in LA. It's always going to be a trial and error, but more than anything else, I'm open ears. If we can do it in a civilized fashion, so that we can move forward with due diligence, like we talked about, and so I'm really humbled to be on this seat, and I'm just very, very humbled. I have no words other than that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I guess I want to echo something that John said earlier. He's talked to all of us on the phone. We're all accessible. And yes, I do get to talk to them, but if you remember...
Hey, you'd love to talk.
You were gabbing just in my...
I'm guilty.
But we've had some good conversations, so I guess I want the public to know that we're all accessible. And as I've told some, I'd much rather talk on the phone, and I know Bruce made the comment, this email back and forth gets a little tedious, whereas on the phone, you can carry on a conversation. So, but I want to thank again everyone for coming, including the guests. And with that, we stand adjourned.
I emailed it, the changes back to Thompson, and I was just waiting for him to... Yeah, I said, I assume you can do this, I would have received. So, I'll call.